Well, good morning. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. And we do appreciate your attendance and for the viewers, thank you for tuning in. For introductions, on my left is Commissioner Deb Shore and on my right, we have Commissioner and Vice Chair Todd Wilchin and Commissioner Bill Avery. And I am Commissioner Roma Amundson, Chair of the Board. And assisting this morning, we do have Dave Durbin of the County Attorney's Office, Kelly Lundgren, and Dan Nolte of the County Clerk's Office. So will you join me now in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you for joining in with that and I hope that everyone had just a fantastic Fourth of July. So, Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda, please?
A copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall through the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster ani.gov. Agenda nine, I want to minutes, approve of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, June 28, 2016.
Who approve?
Second.
It's moved to second that we approve the minutes of last week's meeting. Are there any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are claims, approve of all claims processed through July 5, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved to second that we approve all claims processed through today. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is a public hearing, county change of zone number 16011 from AG Agricultural District to AGR Agricultural Residential District on property generally located at South 82nd Street and Roca Road.
Okay, we'll open this public hearing now for this particular county change of zone. Is there anyone to speak in support?
I'll swear in and if you'd want to sign in as well. Do you sound much sweeter from what the testimony you're about to give us, the truth or nothing but the truth?
I do. Good morning. My name is Todd Lorenz and I'm with Home Real Estate here in Lincoln, Nebraska. And I'm here on behalf of Alan Beatty in support of the project. This project's been through Planning Commission and we got a unanimous approval vote there. And so this morning, I'm simply here to answer your questions if you have any.
Okay. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we did discuss this at a staff meeting.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, anybody to speak in opposition? Or in a neutral position? We'll close the public hearing then on this particular item and let's go down to item number five A.
This is New Business, a resolution in matter of county change of zone number 16011, requesting a change of zone from AG Agricultural to AGR Agricultural Residential on property generally located at South 82nd Street and Roca Road, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
I move approval.
Second.
It's moved to second that we approve this resolution. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we have, oh, excuse me.
Okay, the next public hearing is Comprehensive Plan Amendment number 16002, amend future land use plan from AG Agricultural District to AGR Low Density Agricultural Residential District, low density, on property generally located at South 82nd Street and Roca Road.
Okay, we'll open this public hearing on this particular Plan Amendment number 16002. Is there anyone to speak in support? In opposition to? Or in a neutral position? And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and let's go on to correlating item five B.
This is a resolution in matter of Comprehensive Plan Amendment number 16002 by the Director of Planning. At the request of Olson and Associates, demand a future use plan to reflect changes in land use from agricultural to residential, low density on approximately 118 acres northwest of South 82nd Street and Roca Road, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve this Comprehensive Plan Change Resolution. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is a special presentation, recognition of the county city building art exhibit Donna Gustafson.
Well, good morning.
Good morning. My name's Donna Gustafson and I'm the photographer who has the exhibit up here. I'm employed by the City of Lincoln. I work for the city libraries where I'm a computer technician. And photography has been my hobby for well over 30 years. And I'm interested primarily in landscape, close-up photography of flowers and insects and wildlife. And last year in March, my husband and I went on a tour to Morocco. It was hosted by the Lincoln Public Schools Foundation as an educational type of tour and our travel agency was Overseas Adventure Travel. And we spent two weeks seeing the country of Morocco. It was just fascinating. It's a very diverse country. The southern part of the country is covered by the Sahara Desert, but the Atlas Mountains keep the desert from encroaching into the northern part, which is their breadbasket. And I have a photo here of the northern portion. We were at Volubilis, which is a Roman ruin. And this is taken looking over the landscape of the country. And this is where they grow a lot of wheat and barley. And are there any questions?
Larry?
Well, just to comment, Carol and I are members of OAT as well. And the feature is that you get to have a home-hosted meal in the country where you're going and you really get to know the people. Since we're very close to Fourth of July, I think it's interesting that the First Nation to acknowledge the United States' independence was Morocco.
Oh, really? I didn't know that. That is something.
I'm glad you had a great visit and those types of exchanges are very valuable.
They are.
Especially when you can come back with some of that art and help us enjoy it.
You have a favorite photo that's hanging out there? I'm sure that you love them all. Is there a particular one that you remember the moment or the shot and thought this one's really special?
The one I like the most is the photo of the men in the church, it's not the church, called church, where they're sitting in their prayer circle. And we were in a small town in Morocco and we saw these, all these shoes neatly arranged outside the door. So of course, we had to go peek in the doorway to see what was going on. And we all took our turns photographing the men in the prayer circle and I just enjoyed that one the most.
Thank you.
Yeah. Larry?
One more. Did you happen to get into Casablanca or any other larger cities and go into the medinas, the shopping tents?
We did. We were in Rabat, which is now the nation's capital, and also in Fez and Mecknes and Marrakesh. And we just flew in and out of Casablanca. We didn't get to spend much time there. But we did go into the medinas and the sooks, the old town and the open-air markets. And they're just fascinating, particularly the open-air markets. They're like narrow alleyways and they have all these open-air stalls selling live chickens, just nuts, you know, figs, spices, just all kinds of things. And we also had to be careful because periodically, we'd hear somebody hollering in Arabic, you know, make way or watch out because they were coming through leading a donkey that was laden with whatever items they had on there. It was just fascinating.
They're real experiences and Eve and I and Carol had to really work at not getting lost or finding because they just go on forever. And you think our shopping centers are bad for little kids. You haven't seen anything too, you've seen one of those.
It's nothing compared to there.
That's right.
Well, thank you so very much for sharing those pictures and your background and what your interests are in photography. We appreciate that.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, New Business five C is an amusement license renewal application for community crops to hold a fundraiser dinner on Saturday, August 27, 2016, at Prairie Pines Farm, 3130 North 112th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved to second that we approve the amusement license renewal application for community crops. Any discussion?
I just would add that this is a group of farmers or interested people that they plant and harvest an acreage and then all of that money or proceeds go towards crop, C-R-O-P. And fertilizer, the seed, labor, harvesting, everything's all donated.
Oh, that's tremendous, yeah. Okay, any further discussion or comments? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a special event permit application for Nebraska Sports Council for the Cornice or State Games gravel grinder cycling ride on Saturday, July 16, 2016.
Okay, we do have a letter in support of this as an explanation. The people who are putting this on could not make it today, but they did say that we are aware of the dirt roads and purposely seek those out. And the goal is to find the less traveled roads. The more gnarly, the better. The ride mixes mountain biking and road biking and the ride will happen rain or shine. And so they did say, I attended the ride a couple of years ago where it rained a couple of inches and we did a vote at the beginning to see if we could do the original route or an alternative to avoid muddy, dirty roads. We did the original route and only three crossed the finish line, but everyone had great stories. So, anyway.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this special event permit application for Nebraska Sports Council. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is a resolution in matter of county special, 15064, expanded home occupation for Avalon Event Paradise on property generally located at 12788 West Roca Road, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. This is a resolution reflecting the vote last week to deny the permit. We had originally felt that we did not need a resolution in order to take that action. I still believe that's probably true. However, in the past, we have adopted resolutions denying and there was strictly speaking, no action item on last week's agenda. So this is merely procedural matter to reflect the vote that was taken last Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
So would we be making a motion to approve the denial?
To approve the resolution to deny.
Okay, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the resolution to deny the special county permit for Avalon. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
No.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. F is a resolution in the matter of a corporate manager liquor license application for Roderick Lynn in connection with a class CK liquor license for Sissos Shrine Temple, 1050 Sawtill Road, Roca, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the resolution of the corporate manager liquor license for Roderick Lynn. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hutkins?
I'm a Shriner, so I'm abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four, yes, one extension. G is setting the salary of Susan Tast, Deputy Public Defender, in amount of $40 an hour for 24 hours per week effective July 26, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second that we set the salary of Susan Tast. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five H is approval of the Lancaster County Community Corrections Director Class Description effective July 5, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the Lancaster County Commissioner, Lancaster County Community Corrections Director Class Description. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. I is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and county sheriff to amend B-16-15 with Alamo uniforms for the purchase of sheriff uniform, clothing, and accessories. The total dollar amount will change from $25,770.50 to $31,175. The sheriff's office is requesting to amend the quantities of the items purchased.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this recommendation from the purchasing agent and county sheriff. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is a recommendation from purchasing agent and county sheriff toward a contract for the annual supply of sheriff uniform, clothing, and accessories, quote, 5387, to Alamo uniforms as the lowest responsive responsible bidder meeting specifications. His estimated amount is $23,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this recommendation from the purchasing agent and county sheriff. Is there a discussion yet?
Yeah, Bob Wallace, City County Purchasing Agent. We're going to ask that you hold this for a week.
Oh, okay.
There's an issue with the dollar amount for this, that it will be significantly reduced from the 23,000 down closer to 15. So there was just a mix-up between our office and the sheriff's office on exactly what the quantities were.
For that, we'll be glad later to hold it all. Withdrawn my motion if the second or will agree.
I agree.
Okay, we will hold this till next week then.
Five K is a mini grant contract application awarded with Nebraska Office of Highway Safety to pay mileage and overtime in an amount of $4,875 for the you drink and drive, you lose crackdown.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the mini grant contract application. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five L is an agreement for a work financial plan between Lancaster County and the United States Department of Agricultural, Animal, and Plant Health Inspection Service Wildlife Services for a wildlife damage management program in Lancaster County from October 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. APHISWS will assign one wildlife specialist that will respond to nuisance wildlife problems within the county. The cost of the program will not exceed $7,500.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this agreement for a work financial plan with Lancaster County and the Department of Agriculture and Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Abstain.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four, yes, one extension. M is an agreement with the state in Nebraska, Department of Roads in Lancaster County for improvements to Highway 79 at the highway's intersection with Agnew Road.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So this is an agreement for lighting at Agnew Road and lighting at Raymond Road as well as the modification of one of our little stub dirt roads that I really think needs to happen. And so I talked to you at staff meeting a couple of weeks ago about this and I would recommend that you approve this agreement.
Oh, Larry?
Madam Engineer, is the road at Agnew Road and 79 is already lighted? Do they have to move it when they're improving the intersection or something or?
This is the, I believe, the addition of just a couple of lights in that location.
Okay, there are just one now.
And so you were provided with exhibits in the packet. I don't have them with me today, but I can go over them.
Couldn't tell from there either, but I'll check with you later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. Just want to let the board know that the state is requiring that the board execute a separate resolution with this, with this contract. So that is Exhibit C and is basically authorizing Commissioner Amundson to sign the agreement on behalf of the board. So when you move approval, I'd recommend that you move approval of the contract and the attached resolution.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I would move approval of the agreement with the state and Nebraska Department of Roads in Lancaster County for improvements to Highway 79 at the highway's intersection with Agnew Road, including authorization for the chair to sign the attached agreement with the state.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we go forward with this agreement and with the attached contract. Any attached paperwork? Any discussion?
Well, the reason I brought that up is that was a very dangerous intersection. Traffic from Raymond Central School comes down into Highway 79 and in the fog, we just had a lot of accidents. And about 10, 15 years ago, we didn't have the money to light that intersection, but Norris Public Power stepped forward and put that in and they won a national award for that and it really slowed down those accidents afterwards. So it's a good place to have it and if there's going to be more than one light, that'd even be better. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five N is an agreement with Alfred Benish and Company for asphalt testing services on project number 16-2, asphaltic, concrete, paving, and resurfacing. Testing is completed during the 2016 construction season. Cost of county is $16,294.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So this is the asphalt testing contract that goes along with the asphalt contract that the board approved last week. This is for testing services to make sure that we have good asphalt and good binder as well as good compaction underneath these roads.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this agreement with Alfred Benish and Company. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. O is a contract between TSO and Lancaster County to provide used oil collection services. Term of the contract is one year from the date of execution. Cost of the county is not to exceed $1,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this contract with TSO and Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is a contract between Gebera Incorporated and Lancaster County to provide used oil collection services. Term of the contract is one year from the date of execution. Cost of county is not to exceed $1,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this contract with Gebera Incorporated in Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Q is utility permit number 1446, allowing Windstream Nebraska relocate fiber optic cable on Southwest 72nd Street between West Roca Road and West Martel Road due to county call for U22 replacement. There is no cost to the county.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the utility permit number 1446. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. R is utility permit number 1447, allowing Windstream Nebraska relocate fiber optic cable on West Witstruck Road between Southwest 42nd Street and Southwest 58th Street due to county call for T261 replacement. There is no cost to the county.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve utility permit number 1447. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. S is utility permit number 1449, allowing Windstream Nebraska relocate fiber optic cable on West Yankee Hill Road between Southwest 98th Street and Southwest 112th Street due to county call for N117 replacement. There is no cost to the county.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve utility permit number 1449. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Shore? Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. T is utility permit number 1450, allowing Windstream Nebraska to extend fiber optic cable at the intersection of North 190th Street and Highway 34. There is no cost to the county. Move approval.
Second. It's moved in second that we approve utility permit number 1450. Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. U is utility permit number 1451, allowing Windstream Nebraska relocate fiber optic cable on Malcolm Road and West McKelvey Road between Northwest 105th Street and Northwest 84th Street. There is no cost to the county. Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve utility permit number 1451. Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. V is utility permit number 1452, allowing Windstream Nebraska relocate fiber optic cable on West Waverly Road between Northwest 112th Street and Northwest 84th Street. There is no cost to the county. Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve utility permit number 1452. Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. W is amendment to county contract C-16-235 with FDI Consulting Inc. for Southeast Region Emergency Management, Debris Management Plan, replacing the original statement of work with the attached revised statement of work. This is removing that statement. Work will commence upon receipt of payment in Section 7. There is no expenditure change. Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to county contract C-16-235. Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five X is an amendment to county contract C-15-303 with Beatrice Lawn Care Inc. for weed debatement and mowing. The amendment renews the contract from June 23, 2016 through June 22, 2017. The estimated cost for the services to the county is not to exceed $10,000. Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Beatrice Lawn Care Inc. Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Y is an amendment to county contract C-15-304 with Gary's Lawn and Landscape for weed debatement and mowing. The amendment renews the contract from June 23, 2016 through June 22, 2017. The estimated cost for the services to the county is not to exceed $10,000. Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Gary's Lawn and Landscape. Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Z is an amendment to county contract C-15-305 with Lee's Lawn Maintenance for weed debatement and mowing. The amendment renews the contract from June 23, 2016 through June 22, 2017. The estimated cost for the services to the county is not to exceed $10,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to Lee's lawn maintenance. Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.[1388.91]